We all set?
Rhonda, is this meeting public?
It is.
Okay. As Chair of the Hampton Falls School Board, I find it, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are a providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional exit possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Hampton Falls Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 646-876-9923 and webinar ID 970641242, or by clicking on the following website link, which is posted on the agenda. B, providing public notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instruction has also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 Office at www.sau21.org, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. Anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email at r evans@SAU21.org. D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting should be done by roll call vote. We'll start the meeting now by taking roll call. When each member states presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know. Rhonda, can we take agenda or take roll call? Present family in and out.
Sorry, Jason Farias.
President alone.
Joe Swayze.
President, family in and out.
John Bailey.
President with family in and out.
And Anthony Lang.
President with family in and out.
All right, I have the roll call taken.
The. So before we begin the meeting and getting into item number two, which is the review of our 2019-2020 goals, kind of wanted to give you an idea why we're here today. Back in February at the Agenda Setting Meeting with Dr. Lupini, we had a conversation about the board and its identity as well as our upcoming school year goals. For Jason, Jill, and Anthony's perspective, each year the board needs to put together a set of goals that align with what we want to achieve in the coming school year, and that's what today's meeting is kind of about. The other couple of things we discussed in this meeting was the board's identity. For the past six or seven years, our identity has been focused just on the building project. Our goals were created around the building project. Because we pleaded that, and with the exception of some few minor projects in-house, it, you know, it's time for the board to forward. Do we have to essentially create?
Greg, you've frozen up. Greg, were you with us?
Pardon?
You froze at one point, probably about 30 seconds ago.
Okay. I've got a good connection. I'm there. The last focus of the last part of that conversation in February was how we conduct business as a board, or what our business norms are as a board, how professional we can be in the meetings, how we handle ourselves in the meetings. And that goes not only just for the board itself, we interact with each other and the administration, but then with our audience. How do we want as a board to communicate with the audience, the public comment, or just in general? So I'm hoping today we can cover some of those areas. At the very least, we need to achieve our board goals for the year and begin that conversation with the hopes that we can adopt those at our February meeting, or I mean, our November meeting, because I do not believe they're on the October's meeting. So that being said, on the agenda, item number two is, are listed the 2019-2020 school board goals. Any comment on those goals and thoughts on those goals? If not, we can move into a conversation regarding our 2021 goals.
Thanks, Greg. I, first off, I say if it doesn't look like I'm looking at any of yours, because I have sort of a mission control situation here, so I'm looking at a secondary monitor. It would be helpful for me to understand the context that these last year's goals were set in. Typically, goals are set with some higher overarching directive, whether it be a mission, strategic plan, you know, an improvement plan. So to understand where these are and whether there has been any reflection on the goals, whether the board has looked back and thought about what strategies have been employed to achieve those goals, whether there's been any success in meeting them, not meeting them. Do you have anything to comment in that area that'd be really helpful?
Actually, I do. There's kind of a couple of questions in there, if I gather, Jill. The first one has to do with how we came up with our goals in previous years, and as I mentioned, they were all really driven by the building's project, communicating to the public about it, achieving, wanting to end the project. What we didn't do, and it goes to probably your second question, is itemizing strategic objectives to achieve each goal. And that's one thing I'm hoping we can do today. Did we achieve those goals over the coming years? We did. Can I sit here and say that we identified strategic objectives within each goal, which we can check off and say we've accomplished? I can't say that. We did not do that. But again, the focus the past few years really has been goals driven to achieve our building project's success. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Greg, Greg, can I add to that just off of what's here and from some other districts? So Jill, I think what we're finding so far with our conversations, and mainly they've been with Hampton this year, is that the goals from last year are largely unfinished. I mean, essentially, Northampton has taken a look at their goals and rolled most of them. We very much, this board very much, like our other boards last year, we tried to set some goals across the SAU. We have a very significant competency-based effort underway. You know, you saw a few, if you had a chance to look at that entry plan work that I did, that, you know, these districts had a competency-based effort underway, and yet board members and the general public had no idea what that meant. And so one of the goals last year in all of our boards was to involve our teachers, involve our administrators at each building in educating not only the board, but because we have public meetings and because we can record those and post those on websites and get them out to people in other ways, to educate the public on what exactly that looked like and what it meant for your child. And Northampton's reached the conclusion, and I agree with it, I agree with it for all of our districts, that that goal's unfinished. Right? And quite frankly, they rolled it over. They've added that goal for this year. In your district, and Beth, maybe you can add as much to this, there was an idea that, quite frankly, getting your teachers and the kinds of things, exciting kinds of things that they were working on out there with the public was good in terms of the overall perception of the school, and so was the second goal. I again would say that's largely, largely unfinished. And I guess I would add to that, I've heard you all sort of talk about, I think the third one, I don't know if it ended up in front of me, but there was a real, which I think still exists, a real need for a better partnership with the board selectmen, with town officials, right? That quite frankly, has been very adversarial, has not been collaborative at all. And so there was a goal around trying to find some ways to do that. Again, the election came, the board of selectmen changed. I think there's a great opportunity there. So those goals, as we started to think about what happens after the building project, were somewhat driven by what we're trying to do together as an SAU, the competency-based work in particular, which I would plead with you to continue as one of your goals, because I think it's that critically important. And then these other areas, which were more about what you're trying to accomplish in your town in terms of the relationship between the town and the schools.
Thanks, Bill, and I don't, I'm not implying that I disagree with these goals yet, I don't know yet. It's just, I don't have that history of context, obviously, being newer. I do feel that we can make some progress in being clearer in the way the goals are represented. I think that there are some gains there. But, you know, the context of them doesn't seem inappropriate or off to me by any means, if that's what you were thinking I was getting at.
No, I was just trying to explain where they came from.
Another one?
Yep.
When I came on board, I think another significant goal we had was the culture of the school. And I sat on a committee with John Bailey as the school board rep, who, the board, before I arrived here, had hired a consultant group to come in and really survey what the culture was here. So I mean, I think that was another goal, John, correct me if I'm wrong, that we agreed to do five years in, to see where we were with that. And I know that was a significant investment into, like, where the areas of our call needed to be worked on, which is what I got to work on right away.
So Beth, that's not represented in goals from last year, though?
Right, two years ago, but I think what Bill was trying to say, some of these goals should be and need to be longer term.
So that, that's actually a really good segue to my next question that I had is, does LAS have a strategic plan? And has there ever been an appetite for one? Because that gives us sort of that longer-term look to it without just sort of rolling over annual goals.
I think I'll have Bill come back and answer some of that, if you don't mind. I think coming from an SAU, his overarching goals are, the tentacles are out right into Lincoln Acreman as they are in every other school. I mean, the CBE movement is alive and well and needs to be continued. I think that's a very long-term vision and strategic plan over a probably five-plus-year term. SEL goals are also in the same category, especially, you know, we started it before the whole COVID thing hit us, and probably they are more important than ever, but we're in year two of those goals at Lincoln Acreman. But I think those are two big ones, and I think I would ask Bill to add to what are his other SAU goals with all the schools where Lincoln Acreman is a big part of the picture.
So just to simplify, because there isn't sort of a single document that characterizes that five-year plan per se.
Not singularly from LAS, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Jill, Bill, there really hasn't been, we've had our mission statement, and on the website, there's the mission statement and a few comments are that, and then a couple of sections below that. There's really never been any conversation, Jill, to what you're asking. So has, as, have we, as an individual district, created a document? Or has one existed, not since I've been on the board? Does that mean it doesn't need to happen? I think it's a fair question we need to ask ourselves, because then, you know, a document certainly like that helps both us and then Beth as in an administrative role define each of our goals, I think. And maybe that's what you're asking, I'm not sure. But from an organizational perspective, we've never sat down and beyond our mission statement, taken it one step further.
Yep.
And I'll just pipe in here. From the SAU perspective, there has been conversation about a strategic planning exercise. That is, that is something that we are looking at bringing forth at an SAU level. We don't have it in the budget, because that's, it's a significant investment. But, but when we do conduct that strategic planning, LAS will certainly be, it will be a component of that overall strategic plan that will be LAS-specific. So that, at that point, that's where we'd be looking at. So would it be at the building level up, it'd be coming from the SAU? And it's actually, so we have a joint board meeting coming up. As part of the budget, we've mentioned strategic planning as an item that we want to budget in a future, and actually, probably next year. But we've pushed it back one year due to the, you know, the economic conditions that we're currently facing. So it was something we were looking to include this year's budget, but we are pushing it back one year.
For my part, I've heard reflections of this conversation at our various other board meetings. So there is a desire across the SAU to come up with that cohesive strategic plan that would go hand-in-hand with, you know, building-specific initiatives. My piece on this is, you know, you can go at that effort kind of whole cloth and say, hey, look, from soup to nuts, let's decide what we want. Or we can look at what the structures we've already built, and Beth, I think articulated a few of the structures that come out, you know, through our efforts, the SEL movement, the competency-based. So we have these building blocks that I think, frankly, we just need to assemble in a way that makes sense and unify them across the SAU.
And Jill, I would add that, in one of the last meetings, you articulated how you had really begun to notice more of a cohesive picture in SAU 21. And I think that's what we're trying to say is, our plans plug into the overall picture in SAU 21, given that all of our students end up in high school together, or predominantly all of them end up in high school together. And how do we pack more power into the punch by doing things together, doing them across the board, doing them similarly with common languages, and, you know, sharing the wealth?
Yep. So, so thank you, everyone. That's very helpful. I'm sort of a particular fan of having these types of higher-level guidance documents pulled together, even if they are a matter of thinking to all the various pieces that are already developed, you know, to have sort of that consistent direction laid out that people can understand and pull from. And then when we represent our goals as a board, it's nested within those higher-level goals, and it's very clear why we're putting out what we are, because there's a clear link to sort of those higher, that higher-level context. I value that personally in the work that I do. I think I see a lot, that doesn't mean it's an intense, you know, soup-to-nut strategic framework planning exercise, but rather something that's building that backbone of what we can rely on and sort of identifying those aspirational goals of where we'd like to be in some set of time. Otherwise, we don't have that appropriate compass to work towards.
I completely agree with that. I think if you looked at that entry plan document, what I was trying to say nicely is that this SAU wasn't ready for that exercise three years ago. Quite frankly, this would have been, I think as David said earlier, this would have been the year, and then, and then we encountered this. So I think that's, I think that's another year away. But I completely agree with you about having that bigger vision and guiding set of documents to build individual building and department and board goals off of.
Awesome. That's great to hear, because I think that if, I mean, I'd like to hear from my other board members, if we collectively sort of agree on that, that's going to put this year's goals in a bit of a different perspective for me. Right? That knowing that we're going to be working towards some of those higher-level guiding documents, then we can, and we're a month in already to the year, I feel like that eases a little bit of the pressure on this particular conversation. And I also might be gone in March, so.
Yeah, I agree, Jill, and I think that when I looked at the goals from the previous current year, the objectives portion was where it hit with me. And hearing Bill say that it was kind of a pervasive issue where there's a lot of goals being kicked into the next year, which is common, right? But there's no, there's no burn-down rate, there's nothing for the town to see, there's no vehicle for transparency and us saying, hey, you know, this goal is still active, but 75% of the items that we put as objectives had a measurable result, and therefore, we can show progress. And knowing, especially in our town, the types of residents we have, that's really going to be something that helps us accomplish some of the strategic goals that we set out last year to say, listen, we're being inclusive by saying, it's all on the table, this is what we plan to do, those folks can come into meetings, lend their expertise. And then having, I think we can actually do some of the work towards the school's strategic vision in reverse, because if throughout this process of setting our goals for next year, we always have that, how does this align with what our school wants? And then how does that align with what the SAU wants? Some of that work happens in reverse, and it creates the document as a smaller bite-sized portion as we go through these, with all the school boards.
John, decent thoughts?
Well, I fundamentally agree exactly with what Jill's talking about, and Anthony, for that matter. I think if you look at the goals we have for this year, you'll see a lot of them tend to be more foreign, especially the first and the third. And so therefore, they are by their very nature going. And a lot of it was sort of done in the context, like you were saying, Anthony, given the makeup of the town and the various constituents that we have and their voices, that we're trying to reach out across the broad spectrum and communicate to them what we're trying to accomplish, which I think we were trying to do with the building project. However, I think now is the perfect time to sort of do the reset that we're all talking about. And since we're already a half an hour into today's meeting, I recommend we get started. So I think it's a great time to sort of segue into, okay, well, what do we want for this coming year? And do we want to define some clear goalposts in terms of how we're going to measure success going forward?
Yeah, and I would maybe recommend that we start with anything that we're going to have to punt into this year with these current objectives. And maybe, I mean, we can't, we could probably go all day with bullets on objectives, but maybe if we do two or three objectives for anything that we would carry over into next year, and then add on from there.
Agreed.
So I think the best way to start with that is if you were to have put an objective in the competency-based education initiatives and how we are going to explain and bring the town in, what would you say was accomplished last year and what's left to be accomplished?
So I don't know if Beth wants to speak to this, but I think that as far as the bringing the town into the competency-based learning, it's more a matter of getting the teachers brought up to speed in terms of how we're going to actually implement it and relaying that forward to the students and the parents, so that they understand what they're looking at when they see their report cards. So Beth, I'm sure you can describe it far better than I just did, but.
You did all right, John. David, if you want to weigh in here as well, I mean, this is obviously an SAU initiative. Lincoln Acreman is entering into year three with it, although we have some other things going on this year as well, obviously. But it's our hope to still maintain the same amount of training that we have had, and just to continue with those goals. Last year, in terms of communication, I thought it was becoming effective to have our staff at some of the board meetings and explaining in a public way what they were doing. David, I don't know if you want to talk about maybe something more overarching with parents and report cards, because that's an SAU initiative, but it does need, that's still a work in progress. The rubrics that we use are still a work in progress, and having parents understand the fact that we're still using a dual report card, I think it may be necessary right now, but it can be confusing, because they're two different systems of grading.
Yeah, thank you, Beth. So I just shot it, from an SAU perspective with regard to the CBE, I just jotted down four kind of components that I thought would be worth kind of chewing on here, I guess. The first one, it was philosophy pedagogy, right? We've been working with John Vander Els for the last number of years. This rounds out his third year with us, this particular year, 2021. So we will, we will still have his expertise in the school. But, you know, there's going to be a time where we're going to have to stand on our own two feet and work within our school and within our SAU on this curriculum and on those rubrics that Beth alluded to. So one, philosophy. Two is communication. We made a concerted effort last year to have teachers present at school board meetings throughout the course of the year. I think it actually, it worked really well. Unfortunately, I worry that that, some of that would get us in a remote environment. If we're not face-to-face, if we're doing this via Zoom, I don't know, I don't know how effective it would be. That would be a concern of mine. But the notion of getting it out in front of the public and in public meetings is an important one. Third was, I wrote down reporting, and Beth hit it on the nose. We made a lot of progress moving everybody onto the platform of our school. That paid dividends on communication, paid dividends on consistency. But we've got a lot of work on refining that and communicating how we're recording, still to do throughout the course of this year. And the last thing I wrote down was staffing. That was no small feat, getting two staff members associated with the curriculum coordinators across the SAU. And they're actively meeting with us, with the other curriculum coordinators in the SAU, and maybe more importantly, going back to the school and doing those team meetings and working with their staff. So if, I mean, if we're looking for objectives for around CBE, I would put on all those.
Well, the only thing I would add to that is, just to go back to how that ended up here in a set of board goals, right? And the way it ended up here in a set of board goals was based on a belief that we were starting down the road, or were somewhat down the road on an initiative, that we had a number of board members as represented in that entry plan, and certainly the community did not understand. And so that's a dangerous place to be, right? Starting down the road of an initiative that you think you have support for, but which quite frankly, at the end of the day, people really don't understand. And I would say, in answer to what Anthony said, that I think that in terms of a first step of that, we did well, and we did well in almost every district, right? But let's talk about this district. We had good presentations that were helpful for those who saw them in people understanding what that actually would look like for their child or in their classroom, right? What didn't happen, first of all, there weren't enough of them, so there's a need for to see them in other curriculum areas or other grade levels. But what didn't happen, Greg, if you remember, we had a conversation early on that we were going to cull those presentations out of those board meetings, each of the board meetings throughout the SAU. We were going to create a library of those presentations, and we were going to find a way to push them out to parents and residents, right? So we didn't get there on that part. March came, the world blew up on us, we didn't get there on that. So we have, we have the bones of the beginning of that goal. But in terms of, if you asked me in terms of measuring that goal, does the community understand competency-based any better than they did last September? I would guess probably not much better. Probably not much better, because we only got that. Probably not much better because we only got that far in the goal. I think we have those other pieces to continue on and to enhance in terms of how do we then get this good information, which we've started to assemble? How do we get that really good information into the hands of people who, who need it? And again, we have this really broad library, great presentations at North Hampton, Hampton Falls, at Seabrook, which all help bring some life to what competency based actually looks like in a classroom or can look like in a classroom. And now how do we go to the net? How do we do the next steps of that? That would, that would be my sort of view.
So, so Bill, would you not suggest a broader goal of competency based education with, I have five bullets here for objectives? Or would you word something along the lines more of educating the entire public body about what competency based education is?
Well, I just worry about what's a board goal and then what's in place as, as administrative goals, right? So the communication piece is clearly, that's where a board can play a really important role. There may be other parts of that of what David and, and Beth said as well, where the board has a really important, important role in that as, as well. But, but I was just trying to go back and reframe where I knew we were last year in, in putting this.
But maybe also supporting it within the budget process?
Yeah. Whatever that means, whatever that means.
And I think this is where we can lay in, we can feed into the SAU goal, which, and within the school goals and say, okay, what is our part in helping to create the library? And I would say that's, you know, the, our board, our objective is to allow a portion of every school board meeting for an educator or, you know, someone to present. We also commit that we will facilitate the adding of said material portion of into video library and make sure that all residents are aware of how to access, you know, those.
Anthony, I think you're getting at the strategy now of how we would meet sort of the objectives and goals. And that's, that's not necessarily inappropriate, but it gets us a little further into the weeds. And, and I would argue that, I don't know how many of you get links to recorded meetings, but I get them a lot. And I'm yet to click on one to go back and watch a pre-recorded meeting.
No, our idea, Jill, our idea, that's right. And I believe me, since March more than ever, right? Our idea wasn't, those are eight and 10 minutes snippets, these presentations.
That's a little bit better.
And we cull them out.
Yeah. And I think we, we could even probably go a little beyond that. There are probably simple ways to break some of these pieces down. I mean, I, I think I still hear people complain about Common Core, quite honestly. So, you know, you're, you're fighting an uphill battle anyway. But just really stripping it down is, and, and some of that is, is a matter of like the newsletters that we haven't gotten to yet. Or, you know, making just our, our board communications more transparent in general. But yeah, so, so I think that the board can absolutely, it should play a role in the communication piece. If, if I may, I've sort of been thinking about sort of these goals that we have under categories or topics. And I wonder if I could just take a second to present those because it makes me feel like we're missing a couple of areas. You know, if, if we maintain the three goals we have, I've, I've envisioned essentially five topics that fall within our board purview. And it's community relations, which I think goal, currently goal three attends to. You know, curriculum and instruction, which is board goal one. Is the other personnel and staff, which might be board goal two. And then we sort of have this operations and governance, you know, how we represent ourselves of a board, as a board and how we interact. And then fiscal management. And I don't see anything in these goals about our fiscal responsibility. And especially in this town, we get beat pretty hard on that one. So I think it's reasonable for us to maybe expand our goals a little bit to capture these couple of other topics, which would allow us to maintain last year's goals, but also show that we're sort of progressing and evolving a little bit.
So, so Jill, I, I agree with you and what I was hoping to envision. I didn't have quite five areas. I had two or three, but I had no problem with the five areas you've defined. And identifying those within two or three strategic objectives under each of those. Was that what you were envisioning, envisioning?
I'm, I'm, I'm open to that, but I, I think wherever we're comfortable adding specificity, it only serves us and, and the school and community better. But obviously specificity can also create boundaries. So we want to be quite cautious in how we develop those.
Oh, I don't disagree. And as far as how the current goals or have, or how the goals have been written, I am more than happy to discuss changing the presentation of that. I, I don't know if we necessarily need to list the paragraph and define what a goal is. I have no problem categorizing it and then and to your point, putting some strategic objectives for us to meet without boxing us in, so to speak.
Yeah.
So I am open to that, very much open to that. Anthony, I saw you shake your head there. Something you wanted to share with the public?
No, no, I'm good. I'm, I'm agreeing.
Okay. John, Jason, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think, I think when we do our goals, we have to, parallel to that, think about how we're going to evaluate them. I, I've been on so many of these goal setting meetings in my lifetime that they just, how are we going to measure against them? We have to think about that. They're useless without any sort of evaluation, be able to think, you know, look back and how do we actually quantifiably attain them or not attain them? So we do need to think about, and we don't need to do get down in the weeds, but we have to think about how we're going to accomplish that. We also need to have these, have to have the ability to pivot and know that these will be a year long and will come back and they could be, you know, omitted, amended. In, you know, in months from now. And I guess the other thing that is missing here that we unfortunately needed to include is something with reference to the, this, this, our new normal, I hate to use that, something with respect to how we're going to, as a school board, deal with this, these situations and prepare, prepare, or, or prepare our, our community and our staff and, and support them in these times of needs. Obviously, Kate, you know, we all know now this is what things we would do differently and, and, but we should put some thought into some sort of level of preparedness. You know, through curriculum, teacher, staff, students and all the above. How we'd help guide them and support them as a board. Just a few thoughts.
And that's an interesting comment. And, you know, I think with that one, Jason, I don't know if we need to create a new goal forward as much as maybe we could include the, and I agree with you, the new norm. A, a objective within each of the goals themselves, addressing how each objective may address what you're saying.
Yeah. And again, hopefully we could take that off the list or something of that nature. So just a thought, I'm just, you know, thinking aloud. Sorry, guys, my computer just froze up. I just lost it the last two minutes.
Me too.
I did too. John, do you have any thoughts on any of this?
No, other than I wouldn't be stuck with these three goals. If you have them in place right now, I'd be willing to scrap them and go more towards the, the objectives that, that you and Jill were just laying out. And I think we ought to look at, you know, what exactly you want our goals to be. And not necessarily just say we're going to continue on with number one and number three. And, and say number two is either done or we're not going to continue it at least for this year, whatever the case may be. But, but I think the key is just come up with, okay, well, what are the four or five goals we want to have for this year? And then let's start putting some goalposts around it.
So that being said, what I have written down for goals here, I have five of them. Jill, I'm going to kind of run with your idea here. The first one is the competency, competency based education goal. I, I've got some bullet points there as far as strategic objectives. We can come back to that in a minute, but let's start with the community relations goal. Jill, can you give some thoughts on some strategic objectives that you'd like to see or have crossed your mind regarding that as a goal?
First, I want to ask a question. What is your goal for the end of this meeting? Are we coming out of here with fully drafted set that we're not, don't have to look at again until November? Or can there be some work in progress aspect where we want to go back and do a little homework?
So that's a great question. And originally my thought was hoping to leave the meeting with not necessarily a final draft, but real close. That as I sit here and I'm listening to everyone. My thought is more, if we, let's say we have the five goals, we've identified some strategic objectives within each goal. And then each board member at the end of this meeting, and I'll put a document together and get it out to everyone. Pick one of the objectives and then the next couple of weeks have you redefine that. Get, get it back to me and then I'll get it back out to the board. And with the hopes in the coming weeks, we can iron this out for the November meeting. I don't know how everyone feels about that.
I'm fine with that.
That works.
I'm fine with that. I, I just think some of it, you, you kind of need to sit with a little bit and revisit, you know, how it's written.
You know, for example, with the, the CBE, maybe whoever takes that, that particular goal, they could communicate with David and somehow, somehow figure out something that, that more is applicable to just us. Whoever takes on the fiscal management with Matt. So that's kind of where I'm kind of coming from here on this point. So if everything, everyone's fine with that, that's the direction I'd like to go in.
Okay.
The only thing that we haven't spoken about yet that I'd like to throw in here just for consideration is onboarding new board members. Just because we have three relatively new board members, we're going to have more new board members over the course of the next four or five, six years for sure. So I think that, you know, defining some best practices around this. I know Bill and Matt and others have taken various parts of it. And we've all sort of done a little bit here and there, but I think if we can come up with a go to workbook for how we bring on board new board members and have that evolve over time as we come up with better ways in various categories, I think that would be very helpful.
I think that's a great idea. And that if, if we are still thinking about sort of those five topic areas that I identified, I think that fits right into operations and governance. You know, how we conduct our business and how we onboard new members.
I would agree with that.
You don't like us coming in and shaking everything up, John?
No, I think, I think it's great. I'm the breath of fresh air, but I think that's another important part of it too.
Yeah, I would agree.
As the newest board member, I, and I, there's a lot with new people that, that come on when I onboard, you know, developers or whatever. It's, you know, documenting what I'm learning as I'm going is very easy. It's, it's very new and the emails that I'm getting from Matt or Greg or Rhonda. I mean, it's, it's fairly simple to start just documenting those types of things. So I definitely won't mind being on the bleeding edge of that one.
So I'm missing one then because I only have four things written down here. I've got competency based education, community relations, fiscal responsibility, operations and governance. What's the fifth?
Personnel and staff.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
And I, and I had put, I mean, it doesn't necessarily matter, but, but community based education and sort of the larger curriculum and instruction. But I don't have an opinion there necessarily. It's sort of potato, patato.
That would be under your community relations goal, Jill?
No, the competency based education was under curriculum and instruction. And community relations was about, the board will initiate and participate in a visioning process with the school, SAU and Hampton Falls community. Which I'm not entirely sure what that's saying. So if someone can help me out on that.
Okay, so let's go, we'll move on from the, the curriculum and instruction. I agree with you, the CBE would fall into that. The, any thoughts on the community relations goal? Anyone?
I mean, for each goal, I, I definitely would want to know just that, like the easy, is there any easy measurable within community relations that we can start with? I mean, is it as simple as we know how many attendees are on a board meeting? And that's at least a number data set that we can go on. And if we are doing better at community relations, there may be more. I mean, I know that's really loose and lagging, but you know, is there anything that we can measure in community relations?
What about, what about, take a step back, define what you want to say. Define how you want to say it and define your audience, your platforms. So either by mail, by email, electric, you know, there's the physical versus electronic. But we also should, should think about, all right, what purview does the public have? What do we want to let them know? You know, we put some thought into that. And then, you know, and Jill, I know we talked, we've talked about this, there are multiple ways to, you know, disseminate that. But, you know, those, those, those items, I think we start there and that helps us to find, you know, the scope of it, the purview of how, what the information is. Because there's a lot of great stuff that they're not privy to. And it'd be, and it would be, this is a huge one in my mind for us, a huge one, community relations. It solves a host of issues just by the transparency of what you've all been doing so diligently over the past few months. You know, just a couple of thoughts I had.
Well, if I can add to this, I think, and I'll go to Bill's comment a few minutes ago. I think a conversation, if not a work session with the select board would be a good start. I think in this conversation, we can discuss the newsletter. The town puts out a newsletter now that no longer has information pertaining to the school. And I think we need to have those conversations with the town with the hopes of getting that information back in that newsletter.
I think what I, I think what I've heard some of you say is you have a bigger, broader goal, need, call it what you want. I'm trying to figure out if there are ways to get the Board of Selectment and the school board on the same page on some issues. Right? I mean, a, a, a meeting or, or regular meetings with one another is one way to do that. But, but there's a deeper sort of philosophical issue here yet. And, and that is to get people to stop throwing rocks at one another, right? Just to figure out if there are ways that these two groups have some goals in common that, that we can actually work on some things together, God forbid.
I think that was the perfect time to do that too, Bill.
I was just going to say that. Let's do it now.
Most ideal time to do that with our select board and they are eager. And I just did media about this two days ago. Let's do it. Now's the time.
Okay, so there's one objective for the community relations. Set up a meeting or regular meetings with our select board.
Love it.
Or would we be in agreement to that?
Yes.
Okay.
What? When do those have to be public and when can they just be work sessions? Or are they, if we're all together, they're automatically public?
Yes. Any, any, we're a public body, they're a public body. Anytime we meet, it's considered a, a public meeting. Now, the, now this is my understanding, in a work session, it, that's what it is. It's a work session. But we, we cannot vote. It's basically a work session between two public bodies that would discuss a variety of topics and no voting can occur. If we wanted to have a formal meeting and include If we wanted to have a formal meeting and include them in that meeting, again, we can discuss these a variety of topics, but then we're allowed to vote. But again, because we're two public bodies, we have to meet in public and conduct business in public.
But Jill, you, your, your really good question is, is like around, you know, can you get into a non-public with another body? And, and that's very difficult.
Okay.
Even if the work sessions are still public, the only thing is that.
Yeah, people then not show, but yeah.
And you still have to post, just like you do any other meeting. Don't have to abide by all of that right to know information.
Okay.
Jill, do you want to talk about your, how you define, you want to do?
Yeah, sure. I don't, I mean, I, I think it is somewhat separate from these work sessions. But I really think that we have, we really need to start putting out some communications to our town. And if there is even the slightest chance that they're going to be scrubbed through the Board of Selectmen, I have no interest in, in them having that power. So I really, I, I think they're simple. They don't have to be complex. They could be a postcard, quite frankly. Something that reminds people that we are busy and we are working hard and there are resources if they want more information. I, I started to draft one out and I'm happy to bring it to our meeting next week so everybody can have a look. But I think implementing some even seasonal, so four times a year newsletter that's from the school board to the community would be a really nice objective to set. And unfortunately, I think it does have to be mailed. So I don't know, you know, what implications that does or doesn't have. But a huge amount of our community are not looking on our school website and not subscribing to our school emails.
Well, okay, two, a couple of things. I like the idea. And this kind of goes to something Jason said, you know, I don't know what our availability to a town-wide or email list would be. So that's something we want to talk about if we're going to go down that avenue. The second comment, I'm all in favor of this mailer, Jill. I have no problem with it. My first question then would be for Matt. If we were to begin this in this fiscal year, do we have the funds there? And then as we enter budget season, can we, or should we then increase that line item, in the mailing line item for this type of?
Yeah, so we, we have an amount budgeted for exactly this purpose for marketing. However, it is, it is fairly modest. So if this is something that you, that we do want to increase, then, then perhaps we'll, we should look at increasing that line item on the, on the budget during this, this budget process coming up. But, but as far as this year, you know, I, I'm confident that we can absorb those costs.
Does anyone know what the cost is to do a town-wide individual mailer? I don't think it's very much.
It's something around $300, $350.
Yeah, that's, if we did this quarterly, it would be a non-event budget-wise.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, the, the one, that's the mailing. I don't know about the cost for the printing. That would be another cost. So it could drive that up a little bit more, I'm not sure.
And I think 350 is also if you're hitting every business. I don't, you know, I don't know that we would want to. We'll have a discussion another day. But 350 is literally every, every address in the zip code.
Does the town do, does, does the town have one?
No.
They do not?
A few years, a few years ago, Bill, the town decided to scrap its physical newsletter and they went to an electronic format.
Okay, and it's from the Board of Selectmen or it's from the town administrator?
Yes.
Vote.
Together, Bill.
Yeah.
I think we get back on that in short order, Jill and Greg and the rest of you. I, I have, I, I don't foresee that being an issue at all. So, and then we can send out, you know.
So I, I realize I'm a little late then. Is it possible to squeeze that into next week's agenda?
What?
I'd love to.
Let me, I think. Rhonda?
Yes.
Put newsletter, the newsletter on the agenda for next week?
We can add on, or are you going to have information to include in the agenda?
Yes. Yes, I will.
So I would need that as soon as possible to add it in.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what's the agenda item?
To, to review and discuss a draft newsletter to be sent around town for autumn 2020.
So I would be putting just the newsletter on the agenda?
That works for me unless you need more specificity.
And you'll send me the letter to include in the?
I will.
Okay.
I will. Can I, can we do it Monday? I'd like to run it by Beth.
Monday's a holiday?
This is news to her. Oh, yeah.
Can I see it as well?
Yes, of course, Bill, I'm sorry. Yes, you can all see it. I'll just email it to each of you individually.
Okay, so back to the goal. So for the next strategic objective under community relations is to define a quarterly newsletter.
Agreed.
Okay. Do we have another objective for this goal? Or are we comfortable with the two objectives that we've defined?
Do we want to include teachers in community or is that for another spot? You know, give them the opportunity. You had mentioned before, with, you had success with them discussing their, or is that in another, another area? We'll wait on that.
I think that went, yes, if I understand your question, Jason, I think that would probably be the next goal. Why don't we, for the time being, why don't we run with these two objectives for the community relations goal?
Greg, are you, are you proposing keeping the goal as it is though? Cause that discusses, sorry, family.
Right now, Jill, that's.
I don't think anything's set in stone.
Okay.
Right, right now, Jill. Right now, I just have, right now, I just have it as an identifier.
Okay. Cause it talks about the, a visioning process, which I believe implies sort of review of the mission and vision for LAS. And, and I, I, yeah, I'm not sure where my thoughts are on that, I guess, I'll pause.
I, I missed this part of that. That's, that's proposed for this year?
That was in the 2019, 2020 goals.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
I mean, I, I would personally caution against opening that can of worms to the Hampton Falls community.
I'm, I'm, I'm worried about, I think David said this earlier before. I, I'm sorry, I've had to take a couple of phone calls.
It's okay.
I'm, I'm worried about, I don't think we, we don't have the bandwidth to do that for five different districts separately. Without doing it first, sort of as an SAU and then working off of that. And again, that's what I said, it was our goal to be there by now and we're not.
You're referring to the vision, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I would hold off on that as well.
So, so then is it appropriate in our minutes to recognize that we still see this as a valuable goal? But we, we recognize we won't be able to meet it this year. And therefore we are basically tabling it for future directives. Cause I don't think we should carry it forward if we know that our capacity, given everything else that's going on, will not be, we won't be directing any resources to this.
My answer, Jill, is yes to what you just said.
Then I would, I would propose that we, you know, we, we don't put it in the trash bin, but we put it to the side.
There's harm in keeping it, right? We, we get to it if we can get to it, if we're not, we.
I feel like we're sort of setting ourselves up to fall short of it no matter what though, Jay?
I agree.
Okay.
And are we talking, just so I have, like, I'm trying to keep up with you guys in, in typing your comments. Are you referring to the current goal that's already existing for goal number three?
Yes.
Okay, so this, okay.
So we will, we will develop a community relations goal, but it will not involve a review of the visioning process for LAS.
I would agree with that. And I also, I, maybe I'm wrong. I don't even think we need to say that. I think we can just create our set of goals that have their objectives. And if at this point in time, that's not there, I think we're okay with that. I'm seeing a heads nod, so I'm going to move forward.
Sure.
Jill, can you expand that on the next identifier? Again, you called personnel, staff. I'm kind of curious what you mean there. And then if you have a thought there.
I mean, I guess personnel being our, our Hampton Falls community that provide the education. You know, everyone that works within and, and provide support to our building and our educational system. I know that we have a staff improvement plan that has a five-year plan to it. I don't know if there's something sort of under that directive that fits within here. I had identified, which goal was it? Goal two as potentially fitting within this. This is less in my comfort zone. So I think this is really where we need to make sure that we're supporting our staff in a way that is appropriate for the board and they feel that they have growth opportunity.
Yes to that. I wonder if it's worth talking to some staff members about this. And Beth, maybe you can speak to that. Are there, have you, is there some, maybe some commentary you can give us that on this level, on this topic?
Jill, I'm not clear on what, I'm not clear on what your goal is when it comes to personnel.
Excellent.
Cause I don't have one.
Can I interrupt here for a minute? I'm really leery about the board talking to staff. That really gets into an area that I'm not comfortable with. It gets into, and what I would define as some micromanaging. And what I truly feel that is beyond our scope. It's not that I'm against communicating to the staff, the support we have for them and what they do. I just think there are other ways we can go about achieving that without getting in front of them and, and having conversations like that. I really, and, and if I'm, Beth, if you think I'm, or Bill, outside the lines here, please. But I, I think we're getting into a area here. We've got to be careful as board members.
No, the only, I agree with you, Greg, and, but I understand what Jill's trying to do, I think. I, I, I am, so there's a, so their professional development plan is approved at the SAU level. It's an SAU document and set of plans. There are boards that do as a goal of theirs, you know, enhancing the recognition of their staff. And so they do things, you know, an appreciation luncheon, appreciation breakfast, things like that to, to, to communicate that, right? I mean, I've seen that in, 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 in larger districts in board, in board goals. But, but really in terms of personnel, that, that's about where those things rest.
Okay. And I've seen. So, so, yeah, I, I mean, I wasn't looking to, again, put in any, any real specificity that goes beyond what's already provided. But to our capacity as a board to continue to provide opportunities for professional development, ensuring that we are aware of what we need to budget for. You know, we create the budget and if we don't know what those opportunities are, then there's going to be a mismatch there. Promoting an open and collaborative environment, you know, making sure staff recognize that, that, you know, there are decision-making processes and they can be engaged in those and informed, and they inform them. So it's sort of that in collaborative environment that we are here to support them and budget for the development, their further development. Does that help?
I, Jill, I think a lot of what you just said right there could fall under the curriculum and instruction goal. Many of what you also just said is part of the collective bargaining agreement. So we have to honor that or we are honoring that. But I have no problem putting that as an objective under the curriculum and instructive, instruction, just to identify that and communicate that back through one of our goals.
And there's a couple of those that belong in budget, Greg.
Yes.
I mean, you say our, one of the goals of our budget is to make sure
Yes.
we provide professional development opportunities and whatever it says, it's a priority for you in your budgeting process.
Correct.
If I may, one of the thought process, and Greg, I agree with you. I think this could wind up, I think personnel and staff could go under the curriculum and instruction and sort of go hand-in-hand with competency-based education. Cause when I think of personnel and staff from a board level, what I think that our job really is to set expectations in terms of what we want for the personnel and staff, in terms of what we want them to be trained in, what we want them to focus on, whether that's, you know, the culture of the school, social, emotional learning, competency-based education, professional development opportunities, et cetera. I mean, that's really more of our job here at the board level in terms of this is what we want from the personnel and staff. And then we really leave it to Bill and Beth in terms of execution and then we can recognize the end result.
Yeah, I like a word like that, John. That, that makes, that, I think that aligns better with what, in my mind, what I, you know.
I'll just give you a, a little bit of a funny example of that, you know, and with no attendees, this is easier to say. You know, when I came here, North, North Hampton was really struggling with their culture and really struggling with their culture. And, and it's funny because the, the current chair, whenever we hire someone, because we went through a process, we had a consultant who came in to work on culture and climate and whatever. And he asks me one question whenever we recommend. And that is, you understand the culture we're trying to build here? You know, in terms of your interviews, Susan's interviews, Becca's interviews with those people, is this person going to contribute to that? And he asks it every time. And it's really, it's really, and I know it's coming, right? But it really provides sort of that framework of an important piece of what, what they're, what he's looking for and what they're, they're looking for in that way. So.
All of this being said, I think, and, and to Beth's question, back to you, Jill, I'm, I'm still a little unclear what you're looking for here with the personnel and staff. All, what I'd like to do for the time being is possibly table this one and move on to the next one. And the reason for that is what I'm hearing being said that could fall under this category could, could be representative as objectives in other categories. I don't know.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I think the way John presented it, it, it really does fall within curriculum and instruction. It's just a matter of making sure that we continue to provide the support for our staff that falls within our purview. You know, whether, whether those are financial opportunities or, you know, a shoulder to cry on, I don't know. But the fact is, in our position, you know, we have to be aware of that, even if it's not a direct line of communication between staff and us. You know, they have to know that, that we're here and listening and responsive.
Okay.
So I also just want to, a shoulder to cry on, I also would say that we have systems in place for.
Who's speaking?
Yeah. No, I'm serious. I, I just think that, you know, we, we have protocols in place for certain things. They do have a union and all those other types of boundaries and regulations. So I just want to be careful of that type of thing too.
So for, to, to move on, I'm going to table this one. Why don't we move on to the operations and governance component? John, you kind of started this conversation a, a few minutes ago regarding new, new member guidance. This was also part of the February conversation with Bill and Beth. We talked about possibly a mentor program for newer board members with an old, someone's been on the board. There is a lot to learn. Doesn't mean it's difficult. There's just a lot to learn about this. So I don't know, John, if you want to expand a little more, if you have any additional ideas or anyone else has that. Anthony, you're going through some. So I don't know, John, if you want to expand a little more, if you have any additional ideas or anyone else has that. Anthony, you're going through some interesting times right now. You're asking the right questions. The one thing I do want to throw in here for both, for Jill, Jason and Anthony is that you haven't had a board meeting in person yet. And that is much different than this. And so I, I think that falls under this a little bit as well. John, any, any additional comments or thoughts or ideas?
Yeah, no, I mean, onboarding has always been something that's been important for me, from my perspective. And I think Anthony said it very well in terms of he's going through this and has already got some documents in place from his meetings with Matt and others. So I, I think that, you know, Anthony and I can probably work on this in tandem and come up with a good end result. If you want to give us.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, I, I think that onboarding you there, but this is important. I think the mentoring program would be a good segue to doing that as well. As well as documenting the best practices that Anthony and I can put together and then present to the board for consideration. And I can see that flowing up to the SAU as well. Because I'd like to get back from the other board, other boards as well.
Jill, as you were thinking about this particular topic or goal, is this what you had in mind, or do you are looking to expand a little bit further?
I think it is somewhat what I had in mind. It's also a matter of just ensuring sort of, sort of an, an open and respectful environment. You know, for, you know, engaging discussions and exchanging ideas. You know, that sort of thing where, you know, different opinions are, are welcome and celebrated. You know, I, I don't think, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's a waste of space to put those types of things out there. You know, we've obviously all been, before I was on the board, I attended a, a number of board meetings, as you, you know. And it wasn't always that environment. Certainly between board members it was, but not.
Right.
So I, I, I think just in, you know, saying that, that we value that and we encourage that sort of a space is, is a positive thing to put out there.
So you kind of go into the, another conversation we had, which, which I'm, it's been called board meeting norms. How we conduct ourselves during the meetings, interact with the public, things like that. I asked John to kind of look into some ideas for this. John, if you could share maybe what you found with us, and I think include that, some of those items you may have found as part of the objectives for this goal?
Yeah, absolutely. I can do that. So some of you may or may not be aware of, you know, Robert's rules. You can Google it. I, I can send out a, a brief description and cheat sheet after this that I found. But it basically goes into the, the etiquette and protocol of board meetings and how to interject yourself if you need to, making sure you're waiting to be called upon, especially as we get into the joint board meetings where there's a lot of people involved, where it's easy for people to talk over each other if you're not careful. I don't think people intentionally do it, but it certainly happens a lot. Especially as we got into the more robust topics like remote learning and things like that. We had various school boards wanting to do different things. So that's fundamentally important. The, the big things that I would throw out there just from a, a quick perspective is try to avoid texting during board meetings. Be present. If you're stuck in a situation where you have to do that, turn your camera off so that if the public is watching you, they're not looking at you doing something down on your phone. But there shouldn't be a meeting within the meeting. That, that's a big part of it. We want to make sure that what we're talking about, we're all talking about together. So we come up with what we think is the best solution as a team, as a group together. Not various little cohorts here and there. You know, and it can be even some stupid, simple little things. Like at work, we have sort of this unwritten rule where if you're drinking something, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody because I drink a lot of coffee in the morning too, and I don't want to drink that out of a, a clear cup. But I drink water out of a clear glass. It's just, it's, it's an indicator to the public. It's an indicator to everybody, like, I don't have beer in here. This isn't a dark and stormy. As much as I may want one from time to time, it, it's not a place for here and now. So it's making sure that when you put yourself out there, you're doing it in that kind of a setting. So you don't want people thinking that there's something going on in the background that they're not part privy to, especially from the public. Because again, I think as board members, we're respectful to one another. But it's more a matter of how we're perceived out there in the public space is important. So, but I'll send out the Robert's rules cheat sheet. And I'll certainly get together, especially we go over through this onboarding, sort of my thoughts, and I'll get, welcome yours as well. And we'll come up with what we think are the, the best practices going forward. So I don't know if that's what you wanted, Greg, but.
No, that's, that's perfect. And I don't know if Anthony, Joe, Jason, you have any additional thoughts to that or any you want to add?
Yeah, that'll be helpful to see. Just tea, I promise.
Unless, do you want to, do you want to speak to, I guess, John, do you want to just clearly outline the, the responsibilities of the chair versus the right vice chair? Or do you care about that sort of granularity?
Um, in, in general, I don't. I mean, and Greg is clearly the chair. I'm basically his vice chair. I'm his backup if he can't be at a meeting. If he can't be at a meeting with Bill or Beth, et cetera. You know, some of the Robert's rules, I'll send out to you. A lot of it is really very formal protocol. We don't really get into point of order kind of level protocol. So some of it we can disregard, but there's still some good gems in there.
Okay, so for this particular goal, I have four objectives. I think that's fine for the coming year. For the next goal, under fiscal management, any thoughts, comments regarding that? Right now, I do have one objective is professional development. To identify that, get that message out through our goals for our staff. Any additional thoughts on this, this particular goal?
Just throwing a dumb idea out there. One simple thing might be, at least for this year, if we want to simplify things, throw this under community relations. Because I think part of it is really getting out there what we've done historically. For instance, the money that we give back to the town at the end of every fiscal cycle, because we didn't use the entire budget, et cetera. Certain parts of it might fall under even the onboarding, because you know, we have certain responsibilities as the board for approving expenditures and things like that. So I think that this can be carved up in a couple of different areas and doesn't necessarily have to be a goal unto itself if we want to keep things simple this year. Because I think we're already going to be taken on quite a bit.
Anyone else?
No, it makes sense.
I think that makes sense. I think I have some questions, but I gotta.
No, go ahead.
Well, I think I gotta work them out in my head still, and it might not be something for this year anyhow.
Is that pertaining, or let me ask this, are the questions pertaining to this individual top goal or just in general, the whole thing?
In, in general, just about finance and budgets, which I know we're going to be talking about for a couple of months anyway.
Okay. Okay.
And I agree with John in terms of folding that into, as long as it's called out, I, I can see that the potential negative of putting it as a, as a bullet. Because I think that if it'll draw a lot of attention from the town and, and maybe tarnish the community relation piece a little bit. But if it's clearly out there in terms of, you know, facilitating transparency with budget process and, and all of those others, it's, it's out there in the public, but not something that's going to stick out like a sore thumb in, in the bullets.
One of my thoughts regarding this particular goal was, well, actually reflects back to project a little bit. Part of the reason we had issues with the project is that there was no maintenance plan for 25 years on this building. As we all know, and it was very costly to get us to the point we are today. And I think one of the things I liked about the fiscal management goal was possibly putting on this goal as an item or an objective. Beginning of a maintenance plan. I, I know Alan's probably got one, and, and Beth, please jump in if you have any thoughts on this. But that's one area. Technology is another area to, to identify our investment back to our technology, because again, Jason, to your point, the new norm, I have a feeling technology is even going to become a much broader need for us as we move forward. And to identify that in a fiscal plan or fiscal management plan, so that we're identifying that to the public or showing the public, okay, we're not letting this slide through the cracks as well. I think that's important.
I really, yeah, I completely agree, Greg. And, and you know what? I, I, I think to our presentation in front of the select board about the CIP and what we, you know, that sort of information and the way we did due diligence about realigning what makes sense in today's climate, discussing cost sharing about amongst various funds. And like you said, how much is going back to the public? Let's make them privy to that and understand the efforts we're going to to do X, Y, and Z to the school. Why we're doing it at these times, what, you know, there's a lot of effort there that, and jeez, we, here I am, I'm tying it right back to community relations, you know what I mean? So this, I, I really think that would go a long way.
It doesn't mean we can't include this as part of an objective within that. I think we still should probably have a goal unto itself. That's all.
Okay.
And, and your comment about the CIP, I agree with that. And for the board's knowledge, the capital improvement plan is the five-year plan that we present each year to the select board. What's unique about it the last few years is the school board never was included in it. Now we're part of this meeting, and now we're presenting our CIP plan to the select board. And it, it has helped us considerably. It's all behind the scenes, but it's helped us. And I think that can be tied back into this as well. If, if nobody has any additional comments, I have, here's what I have for goals. I have four primary goals. And again, these are just identifiers, how we reward them. Work the language later is fine. The, the curriculum and instruction with about a half a dozen objectives underneath it. I have the community relations with three objectives. The operations and governance with four objectives and fiscal management, I've got two or three objectives. That being said, what I'd like to do is assign each of you one of these goals to take on, define the overall goal itself and identify the objectives for us in the coming year. Any thoughts on that?
I don't mind working on the fiscal responsibility piece.
Okay.
As long as Matt agrees to help me out there. Now, you, you were texting.
Be my pleasure. Also having a drink in a dark colored.
Okay, Jason, I'll give you that one. And what I'll do, I will, I will put all of this down and I will email everything to everyone and get to give you your starting point. Right. John and Anthony, I have you down for operations and governance. Is that okay? Jill, will you take on the community relations component?
Yep.
Okay, and I will go ahead and tackle curriculum and integration. And so what I will do is I will email the group what I've got written down here. And then if you can take your portion, work it out and get that back to me. I don't think, we certainly won't have enough time for our October meeting to do this. I expect that there will be a couple iterations between all of us with regards to this. If could I, maybe by the end of next week, get a rough draft of each of your goals and strategic objectives for what you're responsible for back to me? I'll put it together and then send that back out for review. What do we think of that?
Works for me.
Or can, can we use Google Docs?
Yeah.
So we can just.
Want to share it?
See each other, yeah, see each other's comments and things.
Yeah.
Just be careful of the right to know stuff, Greg. If you guys are going to all be sharing and collaborating on Google Docs, it has to be made public to the entire public.
Yeah, Rhonda, that's a good point. I was just.
Yeah.
Rhonda, how would you recommend we do this then?
I think the best bet is for the board members to forward you their document individually, and then you can compile it in one and we can submit it on an agenda. Because if you're going to be discussing amongst yourselves, you can't.
That's true.
That opens it up to the whole right to know.
Even if we're not voting on it, Rhonda?
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're collaborating.
Yeah.
Discussing. Yeah.
Because I think.
It's a meeting inside the meeting.
Creating a document, yes.
So let's do this. Let's do this. By, by the first of November, if you can get me your information, I will put it together. I will put it on the agenda for the November meeting. We can discuss it in further detail at that point and then fine tune it with the possibility that we would vote on it in November, but more than likely at our December meeting.
And Greg, if you're taking on the curriculum and instruction, can you meet with David and I?
Well, yes, that's, I was going to, that was my next step. I will meet with both of you. Jason, you've already mentioned you'll meet with Beth, or I mean Matt.
Yeah, don't meet with me about all that finance stuff.
Who wants to talk community relations?
Yes.
Great.
I will.
Awesome.
Oh, you, okay. And then John and Anthony, possibly reach out to Bill. He certainly could help you with that. Sorry, Bill, I'm putting more on your plate.
Thank you so much, Greg.
We'll, we'll reach out to various people for various parts of the.
Okay. Okay.
And just for the record, I'm, I'm happy to help any other board member with their task.
Actually, that's a good, that's a good point. Yeah.
You're going to be a new member of Boot Camp, John.
I'll enjoy it.
John, you there, John?
Okay. So that sounds like a plan. And I will look forward to getting all your feedback by the first of November, and we'll get on our, for our November board meeting. Hold on a minute. So we've done that. I think we've covered everything I want to cover. I do think, Jill, to your question earlier, what is my goal for the end of this meeting? I think we've achieved it. If anyone thinks we're missing something, please say something. I do like the direction that we're going in. And so unless anyone has anything else, is Bill or Beth, you think I'm missing anything here?
No, I think you're good.
Even the dog thinks so.
Dog thinks so too, right?
Well, that was great.
Okay, unless anybody has any additional comments, can I get a, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. A second.
Rhonda, roll a call.
You want to roll a call or does everybody just want to?
Just wave.
Agreed.
It's unanimous?
There's the roll call.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Bye.